We gotta wait for that light to change. Alrighty, I will call this meeting of the City Council of Oak Park Heights, Minnesota, to order. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and then approval of the agenda. I believe we have one addition, item G, under consent, which would be fireworks sales and storage at Lowe's.
I move approval as agenda is presented with your amendment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is my swearing in, so I guess I'll go up front for that.
I, Chuck Doherty.
I, Chuck Doherty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
That I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of the office of mayor.
And the city of Oak Park Heights.
And the city of Oak Park Heights.
For the best of my judgment and ability.
For the best of my judgment and ability.
And we'll take a few-minute recess for the mayor to take family photos to celebrate the moment.
Aw, thanks, Steve. It's a good picture.
It's no going in.
Yeah, good to see you.
Alright, thank you.
My pleasure.
That's a fabulous signature. Thank you. Good, yeah.
A lot of guys get sent to prison with signatures.
I'm sure. Good job. Yeah, absolutely. Congrats.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, that's alright. I got it.
Alrighty, we'll call this meeting back in session. First item is council and staff reports. Let's see, I was at, did a, I can't think of the word. So you see.
Coalition of cities.
Yeah.
The Coalition.
Coalition of utility cities, meeting on Monday, just doing a wrap-up on the session and kind of some plans for going forward. One thing is that we're gonna be getting a rebate back because they had more money in their coffers than they need, so according to their bylaws, then we get a rebate. So we have some money coming back. Parks Commission meeting last week was canceled, and I will be attending the League of Minnesota Cities Conference up in Duluth next two days. And we'll go to Councilmember Johnson.
I attended the Middle St. Croix watershed meeting for this month. The big item on the agenda was the Rainey Johnson Estate parking lot expansion. The watershed did suggest approval with one condition, which was sent over to the city administrator this afternoon.
Councilmember Lynn Ingraham.
I have nothing to report. I wasn't able to attend the fire advisory. Meeting, so maybe you can
Yep.
give a quick update there.
Councilmember Runk.
There's nothing to report.
Okay, then city administrator.
Yep, Mayor, Council, good evening. Quick update on our Well 3 project, so we have started that. Really excited to be able to get a shovel in the ground out there. That's gonna be a multi-year project, so looking to finish that in '26. So a lot of work has gone into that even before my time. There's been a lot of time and energy from the council and city staff on that, so we're excited to get to the point here where we're getting a shovel in the ground. And then too, related to the Fire Advisory Commission meeting, met with cities of West Lakeland, Baytown Township, and also Bayport. That was, I believe, last week, I think, roughly. Well, regardless, had a meeting to talk about the history of how we came to the agreement, how long the entities have been together to form their arrangements. We have talked about at future meetings, having guest speaker come in to talk about Fire District, and also chat about a JPA, Joint Powers Alliance, just potential options of conversation. So not saying that we are going that route, but want to make sure that we look at things as we evaluate this, and our contract comes due at the end of '29. So had a good conversation with the group and look to continue those in the future.
Was there anything brought up? I know that's, that one was hard to schedule, and I wish I didn't. I was hoping I could make it, but I was hung up with something else. But I know we're looking to have those more often. Did they just, was it discussed there to try to get those scheduled?
We
A number of them out in advance, so we don't have the issue like we had for that meeting trying to get scheduled.
Yep, thank you, Councilmember Lil' Jgrin. We have, we had some of that discussion, and it is hard to get, you know, all the ships that sea together for those. What we talked about is maybe looking at the next one of trying remotely, of having that meeting remotely, just given that if we have a guest, you know, a guest speaker, that they wouldn't have to come out to Bayport. And I think that might be an opportunity for us to try of just how that works from a remote standpoint. I'm more of a in-person person. I don't know how, you know, everyone else feels on that, but maybe for the, at least the next couple meetings, when we have those guest speakers, we could try that out, see if that is more beneficial, if that's easier to, you know, get the group together. And, you know, we can always go back to the in-person meetings, but yeah, it is, it is kind of a challenge to get all the schedules to mesh.
I got a question. I got a question. I saw where there was a fire, Chief, maybe you know more of this. There was a fire, and still on our house fire, a couple weeks ago, on Wilkman and Churchill. And I saw something in the paper about, it sounds like there's a new procedure, and that since it was a structure fire, they automatically had called Monomeda and Bayport?
Yeah, so you're referring to, it's called auto aid. Essentially, it's a, it's like a strike package. So instead of the old traditional one where your fire department arrives on scene, says, start me another agency, start me another one, or they know right off the gate, they've taken a new approach to major structure fires and developed like a strike package. And so the dispatchers automatically do an auto aid. It's called tune, or a tone out, and that gets all the local ones rolling, as well as backfills the ones that are on scene. So it's kind of a new and improved strategic approach to firefighting, to get the maximum effort of, you know, your apparatuses and your personnel. Everybody's being toned at the same time, instead of the three-to-five-minute gap, maybe, until a leadership arrives on scene and says, oh, send us some more. Well, no, we're gonna send ya, you can peel off if you need to, you know, but, so it's kind of a good approach. It quite, it is. And everybody's kind of moving in that direction now, we've seen. So, yep, is that, I think that's what you would, I was on duty for that as well, and heard that, you know, a lot, a lot of resources, really quick.
Right, I mean, it's just that it changes the dynamics.
Yep.
What the fire departments need in this, particularly on the equipment basis.
Right.
Obviously, if Monomeda and Bayport responded, they were bringing in all the rigs. And so
Yep, yeah.
It goes into the larger picture of how much equipment do we need in this area.
Well, Police Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a quick note, as 4th of July is fast approaching, and it lands on a Friday, no less. So we've got extra staffing on Friday and Saturday for the city, as well as it'll be additional DWI patrols. So we're gonna keep an eye on the, this'll be the true, I think, the big task for our new boat launch ramp in the busy that weekend there, of course. It always is on the 4th, as well as the high traffic of pedestrians on the Sacred Crossing Bridge, and just traffic in general coming in for the fireworks on a Friday. So there'll be extra staffing for that, and we're good to go. That's it, pretty quiet.
Thank you. Assistant, Assistant City Administrator.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For you this evening, I have just one item, the recycling award winner, Erin Wilson, at 1437257 Street North, was chosen as the most recent recycling award winner. And for her efforts, she can choose between a smoke detector or a fire extinguisher for free that we give her through a grant program that we receive from Washington County, just to thank her for recycling.
Okay, well, thank you. Alrighty, now we'll move on to our visitors and public comment, with two presentations. First one would be the 2024 audit presentation by Red Path and Company.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for having me here this evening. I'm gonna go through a summary of audit results, and then some high-level financial information. And you may have heard me say in the past, we work really closely with city staff during the audit, but we really do work for you as council. So as I'm talking, if you have questions, please feel free to interrupt me, and we can go over those. There are four reports that we issued in conjunction with the audit this year. The first one is our opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements. This is really the primary purpose of our audit, is to look at the city's financial information and offer an opinion as to the fair presentation. We're not saying that everything is exactly right down to the dollar, just that it's a fair presentation. The results of our audit this year are that we issued a clean, unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can provide, and really, in summary, it's the result you would want. The next report that we issued in conjunction with the audit is a report on internal control. As part of our audit, we don't audit the city's internal control, but we gain an understanding of the processes and the procedures that are in place in order to plan our audit. And if anything came to our attention during the course of our audit that caused us concern in the control environment, we would identify it in this letter. This year in particular, we paid attention to some compensating controls that the city had in place during absences or tenure breaks in the finance department. And nothing came to our attention that we needed to report in this report, so that's good news. It's fairly common for cities to have findings in the internal control report, but no findings this year, so again, that's the result you would hope for. The next report we issue in conjunction with the audit is a Minnesota legal compliance report. The Office of the State Auditor has a series of compliance requirements that they like us to look at in conjunction with the audit. And I always like to remind you that we're accountants, not attorneys, so we're looking at it from an accounting perspective. And during our testing this year, we identified one instance of non-compliance, and that relates to contracting and bid laws. There was a project during 2024 that went out for bid, and the solicitation for bids was posted on the city's website, but it was not published in the city's official newspaper. And that's one of the compliance requirements that the state has, is to publish that solicitation for bids in the newspaper, so we had to identify it in our report. That was the only instance of non-compliance identified. The final report that we issue in conjunction with the audit is a communication to those charged with governance letter. It's a long letter from us as the auditors to you as city council, and most of it is standard, kind of templated language. So I've drawn out the key pieces that are unique to the city to identify for you here. The first item that we're required to communicate to is any accounting policies changed during the course of the year. There was a new GASBIE. GASBIE stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board, that the city had to implement this year, is GASBIE 100, and accounting changes and error corrections. Error corrections is in the name of the find, or of the standard, but there weren't any error corrections this year. It just addresses how changes within the city get represented in the financial statements. So if there's a fund within the city that has significantly increased operations or significantly decreased operations, it changes where it's presented in the financial statements, and then we present that in accordance with the standard. So it did have a small impact this year, but not anything of significance. Oh, can you jump that one?
Oh, sorry.
All good. The next item that we're required to communicate to you is to remind you that there are some estimates within the city's financial statements. Some numbers within the statements are firm known amounts, and others are estimates. So I've identified the three most sensitive estimates here. The first one is the present value, or the net realizable value of land held for resale. So if the city has property that you're holding for resale, accounting standards require you to report that on your balance sheet at the estimated amount that you're going to sell it for. So if you have a developer agreement to sell something for a dollar, you would need to write that down for a dollar. Because the sales price is an estimate, we identify it as an estimate in your financials. The next item I have identified here is a funny acronym, Spitup Liability. It stands for subscription-based IT arrangements. And what that is, is looking at when the city enters into a long-term agreement to access software, you've committed to make monthly or annual payments on that software, which creates a liability for the city. It's considered an estimate because we're estimating the term, the length of that agreement, if there's any renewal periods, and also the interest rate that's used to present value, that creates an estimate. So significant, but it just really represents an agreement you've entered into. And then finally, I have the ParaNet Pension Liability. And this represents the fact that city staff participate in the state ParaPension Plan. Para obtains an actuarial study on an annual basis to identify the plan's net pension liability as a whole, and then they allocate that out to all participating employers. And so this year, Oak Park Heights' share of that is 1.6 million. You can see over the past couple years, it's varied quite dramatically. This is just an actuarially determined number that fluctuates based on salary of employees, of your payroll as a whole, market conditions, actuarial assumptions. It's not something you actually need to pay on, other than through your payroll contributions. So balance sheet item that you're required to include, and it's a large dollar amount, which is why we identify it here. Remaining required communications, we had no difficulties encountered in performing the audit this year, no disagreements with management. And if anything else came to our attention during the course of our audit that we thought you should know about, we would report it in the other matters area, but nothing identified this year. Next, I just have some high-level summary financial information. This is a summary of results for the city's governmental funds. And governmental funds are those that are supported by property tax dollars, or grant dollars, you know, some sort of funding source other than self-sustaining. I will call out maybe two significant pieces of activity here. If you look at the general fund, which is the top row, two columns over from the right, a large increase in fund balance this past year of almost $800,000. There's various factors that are going into that, but I think the two largest ones are some significant investment earnings, investment income, and then some significant cost savings in snow plowing. The snow plowing expense line was quite a bit under budget, which is contributing to positive results in the general fund. And then at the very bottom, you'll see that your fund balance for capital projects increased, and that's just planned savings for future projects. And then I here, I have a summary of the general fund budget. Actually, you can see revenue above budget, and expenditures below budget, which is contributing to that increase. Here I have a slide that shows your general fund, minimum fund balance. So what those blue bars are, is your minimum fund balance per policy. The city's fund balance policy has various components, and so I would say that this bar represents the minimum of the minimum that your policy says that you have to have. And then that red line is actual fund balance. The vast majority of fund balance that exists between your minimum policy and your actual has been allocated and earmarked by policy for specific items, for some specific savings and whatnot. The reason why the savings and this fund, this minimum fund balance is so important, is one, to cover you for one time unexpected costs. If something significant happens, you need to be able to cover those costs, but also to manage your cash flow. If you look and see, as a reminder, the city's primary source of revenue is property tax payments, and those come in twice a year. They come in about this time of year, and then at the end of the year. And you need to have sufficient cash or resources on hand to get you from one property tax payment to the another while you spend down that cash. So you can see the significant decrease in general fund cash here. Next up, I have some information on the city's business-type funds. Now, the business-type funds, such as your utility funds, are intended to be self-supporting, so all the costs of that fund are supported by user fees or similar, similar revenues. Here you can see the bar is various components of operating expenses, and that red line at the top is your operating revenue. When we look at these business-type funds, we generally like to see a bigger gap between your operating revenue and your operating expenses. You want your revenue to cover your expenses clearly, but you also need sufficient differences to save for future capital. There is some depreciation expense represented here, but that represents the cost of bold capital, and capital is not decreasing in costs, it's, you know, increasing exponentially. And so you really do want to pay attention to this, especially as you head into the next budget cycle, looking at your utility rates. It's important to consider your future capital needs, and make, make sure that you're earning enough to cover the cost of those.
If I could just cut in here quick, Rebecca. I mean, Mayor and Council, this is exactly why we're doing the water and sewer utility rate study, to make sure that we are properly funding our utilities, not only for the short term, but also for the long term, because as Rebecca said, you want to see that, that separation there. And so I think it'll be very informative, not only for staff, but our residents, to see, you know, the results of that water and sewer rate study, and have that known certainty for the long term here.
And then similarly for sewer, you can see that it has improved slightly in recent years, that your operating revenue is beginning to cover your operating expenses, but you still don't have any gap there to save for future capital. And one of the biggest components of expense here is that Met Council sewer expense that you do not have control over. The Met Council tells you what it's going to be on an annual basis, and that's what it is. And so you, you need to have enough revenue, both to cover those increases and your capital. And then finally, storm sewer. You can see that you do have a gap here between your operating revenue and expense, but if you look at the scale, that's a relatively small dollar amount. One significant incident, or one significant expense could eat that up rather quickly. And so as you look at your water and sewer rates, I would pay close attention to storm sewer as well. And I think that's all I have pre-prepared for you, but I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Nice job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca.
And next, we have a Washington County Attorney introduction, Kevin Magnussen.
The good news is that I have a PowerPoint, but I'm not gonna use it. It's best for everybody. I understand, I'll try to keep this. I mean, there's some cool videos and stuff on there, but, you know, the sensational stuff, that's not what you're here for, right?
Yep.
Well, I'm just gonna be, I'm, I got some graphs and stuff I'm gonna read off of real quick, but I don't have a real agenda, other than just come and say hello, and make sure that we've got good communication, we're talking, so a chance to answer any questions or anything you may have. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. It's an honor to be here on the day that you were sworn in. We have a lot in common. I mean, it was both with mixed emotions that we take, you know, you took your position, I took mine. I was also appointed after Pete died, and that was really rough, still miss him every day. So it's a, it's a mixed sort of operation, I get that. But, you know, I'm not gonna give you any advice. I didn't know what, you know, what the county commissioner did when I, when I started the county attorney's office, after 20 years in private practice, mostly federal court. But you've been doing this for a while, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to tell you. Though we are gonna be on the same ballot, so we've got that to look forward to. And hopefully you'll have a Soviet-style lifestyle like I had. Also, I have to say that one of my favorite parts about the entire Oak Park Heights government system is your police chief. Chief Hanson has been great. He welcomed me when I started, invited me a night to, night, or national night out, and we spent some time together as well, is he tries to keep his, his records person from calling me. Sandy, I love her. She hasn't called recently, so I'm hoping that means that we're getting our stuff in on time. But I do really appreciate when something is not quite right, and I, every time I see her, I say, keep it coming. I really appreciate it. If we're not getting our stuff done and turning it around quickly, I wanna know about it. And lastly, of course, you're, you know, you've got competent, excellent city council, great firm, so I'm sure that makes life a little easier, and you've got good legal advice there. So I just was gonna run through a couple of statistics, or just try to talk about, you know, some, some high-level things, maybe get a discussion going if you wanna talk. If not, I'm happy to sit down, whenever. Because I know these meetings can get a little long. So we have 61 and a half, because we have a part-time person, a half-time lawyer, so there's 61 and a half people in the office. And it's pretty much, it's a little bit more attorneys and staff, but it's about 50/50. And we take about 1,500 referrals a year. That's up 500 from a decade ago, and we end up charging, you know, about 75% of those. And I think that rate goes up, I think, because the law enforcement, you know, is just, gets better and better in Washington County, and you can kind of tell. Sometimes it's a, it's a measure of what the county attorney's office is doing, but I think often, it's the measure of the kind of case referrals we're getting. And, you know, 75% is a pretty good number when you consider, there's a lot, some of those we just can't charge for various reasons. So a couple of crime trends that I think people wanna know about, the kind of parameters of our, of the time, you know, so auto theft-related crimes, so that's everything from joyriding to auto theft, to being caught in Washington County with, you know, a car that was stolen in Ramsey, so receiving stolen property. And, you know, those numbers have gone up. You know, at first I looked at the 2019 number, and I thought, oh, man, that's 55, that seems like a lot. But then when we looked at, you know, 2021, in the middle of COVID, it was at 93. And so we're, we're back to, we went to 77 in 22, and 23 was 46, and 24 was 47. So, I mean, it's still too high, but I think we're making some progress. And again, I think a lot of that is the way that law enforcement has been addressing that crisis there, and it's safe to say that it's no longer the epidemic that it, that it was before. Criminal sexual conduct also has stayed pretty much the same around, you know, 30, high 30s, low 40s. But again, in 2021, that same year, it was at 50, instead of being at the, you know, high 30s, low 40s. So you can really see in the kind of stuff that we're looking at, that the effect that the COVID, you know, and the whole pandemic response had on just our society. So I talked a little bit about auto theft, and I had some cool pictures, but, you know, they're really not, not worth it to spend time on. But I will tell you that joyriding is something that I hear a lot about, and, you know, it's, it's crazy because, you know, when I was younger, you know, entry-level crimes were, you know, smoking, dope, and shoplifting. But now it really is joyriding, you know. But now it really is joyriding, you know? And that's the situation where, you know, some kid takes the key to challenges, gets a car going, invites their buddies in, they drive around a stolen vehicle, and what you do with the stolen vehicles, you commit other crimes. And then, you know, pretty soon, kid went for a ride, he's doing stuff, you know, that's illegal, and the next thing is they're trying to do their own joyride, trying to get their own car and take it for a ride. And then that just translates right into the auto theft, you know, the statistics, and then the carjacking stuff that we've seen. The good news is we haven't had a carjacking in 2023 or 2024. We had one in 2022. And so you hear about that going on in, you know, the bigger cities, but it's not an issue that we're dealing with in Washington County. You know, and recently, carjacking became its own crime. You know, before, we just charged someone with, you know, auto theft, assault, but it became its own crime, some enhanced penalties, and that's because of all the, you know, the attention that it got. But again, you know, we haven't had anybody charged under that, we have not charged anyone under that statute, which I think is great. So there is a crime trend that I'd like to draw your attention to, because I think it's a parameter of our society, and it's one that I'm not happy with, and that's fleeing from law enforcement in a motor vehicle. So in 2018, we were at, we had 35 cases that we charged. In 2022, it was 111. And that tells you a lot about what's going on. And, you know, it dropped down to 82, and then in 2024 it was 75, but still too high. And that's, I mean, the only way you can account for that is it's a cultural shift at some level. And I think in almost every area, whether it's talking to people in the store or prison or, you know, Heights Prison, the boiling temperature just seems to be so much lower. I mean, people are throwing down for things that make no sense at a younger age in a more dramatic way. And, you know, there's a, I mean, their guns are everywhere. I mean, kids have guns, their guns are really, that's why, when I went to law school, I never thought about that someone might be shooting at me. So the people that do go to law enforcement, I thank you very much, because, I mean, there's a very real possibility you could get shot at. I think most people at some point in their career do. And when you've got young kids who, particularly during the COVID era, you know, my daughter was nine at the time, and it took three adults to get her to do that at-home learning. I mean, we had to tackle her, we had to bribe her, we had to threaten her, she's crying, flopping around on the floor. The last thing she wanted to do was do, now imagine if you don't have that kind of intervention, you know? And you're on the streets with a $700 iPhone and nothing to do, and that's not a great recipe for an 11-year-old. And I think we saw a lot of that. So we're watching, I know a lot of the sociologists are watching that demographic move through the system, and they're seeing, we start talking to some of the truancy people in high school, that the people who are now in junior high, you know, they're suffering from some of the effects or the lack of development that they had, because a lot of folks, you know, the only structure they get is in school, right? And, you know, and whether it's a band teacher or a coach, a teacher, you know, or in clubs or in church or whatever, but when you're locked at home and there's not a lot there, you know, that's a really sad situation for all of us. And I don't weigh in on the political side, I mean, teachers, you know, all I can say is that we know now what the effect of not having these positive influences that we work so hard as a city and as a county to deliver. So I'm going to talk, just I skipped a couple of things, and again, don't want to take too long here. But I'm proud of the East Metro Human Trafficking Task Force that Pete started. It's, you know, been a huge success, and I can't emphasize enough the importance of having that be a local task force, because the BCA has one, right? And, you know, they do a lot of great work in Minneapolis and St. Paul, and maybe Duluth or, you know, some other places. Duluth is actually, you've got a surprisingly high amount of sex trafficking because of the docks. But, you know, if something blends into Washington County, you know, then they pursue it, but there's, there's just not a lot of enforcement going on through, you know, a statewide agency as there is, you know, having the local task force. And it's one of those things, it's like, you know, like weed killer, you know? You don't realize how many dandelions come out until you stop spraying, or whatever. And it's definitely like that in this realm. You know, when we're doing a sting, and you look, when they post a fake ad, you know, with a detective as a mark posing as a sex worker, you would be shocked at the number of solicitations that come. I mean, there's no shortage of demand out there. And I think that task force is really effective at keeping a lid on it, because the stuff we're seeing, I mean, it would be much worse if people didn't know that there's a task force working in Washington County. One of the things that I've done since I became the county attorney is I've been putting, I mean, we're still doing the stings in the recovery operations, which are really important, but we're spending more time investigating and looking for people who are on the dark web or different places looking for underage sex workers, where they're looking to buy it, you know? And that, I mean, that's a different level of evil. You know, giving someone a sting is pretty bad, because that, you know, we're using an underage decoy, so that tells you a lot about them. But someone who's actively out there seeking someone like that out, I mean, that's pretty significant stuff. And the other thing I've been focusing a lot on are runaways, because we have the tools in our task force to really do something, and, you know, and that's one of the hardest things to crack, you know? Somebody runs away, you know you have just a limited amount of time, and then you start to lose your grip on the situation. Back when I was, you know, I remember as a kid, everybody would go to the Greyhound station to look for, you know, people that had run away. I mean, now it's all online, right? There's so much grooming that goes on before a kid runs away now, and they don't know who they're interacting with half the time. You could have someone who thinks she's, she thinks she's going to go off with her 16, 17, 18-year-old boyfriend, and a 32-year-old man's going to pick her up from the house. And we had a situation like that in Cottage Grove. There was a grandmother of a 14-year-old who was texting on an app called Text Now. It's like a Snapchat ad. And so her grandmother reported her missing. We were able to get the information, we were able to get a subpoena, emergency subpoena out to that app, get the geographical location information, indicated that she was at Boys' Motel in Newport. And when the officers went there, they found her, she was by herself, but she was, had been there for a couple of days, and she was there with nothing but a negligee, you know? And she'd been assaulted for, you know, quite some time. But the fact that we had this capacity to work, I think probably, you know, may have saved that girl's life or at least, you know, kept her out of that life. So that's kind of my highlighting of that. I'm with Pete all the way, I think that's a worthwhile thing for us to focus on. Well, one other thing on that, on the sex trafficking, a lot of times people ask me, you know, what can they do to help? And I think Pete did a really good job of raising awareness, and I'm trying not to drop that ball, but I think the area where we're still really anemic is on the recovery side. You know, we meet with these folks when we do a recovery operation, and we have counselors there, and they see all the right things, but then when it comes time to do a real placement, a real intervention, there's so few resources that there are, and it's really hard to get them to make that step. And there's a new house that's about to start, a new charity that's about to start operating in Oakdale. And I went and visited, it's not open yet, but it's this beautiful home in an upscale neighborhood, it's like middle class, upper-middle-class neighborhood. You would never know that it's a group home for, you know, women, typically women, I think it's for everybody, mostly women who have left the industry, the sex trafficking industry. And they're, you know, they've got a beautiful home, a lot of respect, that comes with part of that whole counseling and recovery process. And that's an area that we can't get enough, you know, additional resources and people who care. So I always put that plug out there. The house is called Cordy's House, if you want to look it up. I think it's great. It's a great idea, at least. We'll see how it goes in operation, but everything looks great so far. So I'll talk a little bit about, you know, my philosophy on prosecution, just briefly. There are a lot of different perspectives and things that we can talk about, but just know that the number-one priority as I look at this is public safety. And I think there is a necessary emphasis on, you know, diversion and rehabilitation, especially with younger offenders or less serious offenders, or people who are struggling with mental illness or chemical dependency. But I don't think that in the process of trying to help somebody, we should put the risk on the backs of that person's neighbors. So I don't want to release somebody back into the community on this theory that they're going to get better, when you guys are the ones that have to bear the, you know, the risk that comes with that, because what they reoffend is going to be, you know, in your neighborhood. So we do a lot of work in the diversion side. The circles of justice are really helpful, especially for younger kids, you know, going through to hear what the impact of their actions are. You know, but when it comes time for difficult decisions, we make those, we certify, you know, if we need to, a juvenile for adult court, don't take that decision lightly, or extended juvenile jurisdiction where they're in a detention center for younger people. But the good news is that the vast majority of kids that we see are ones, we did something really stupid, and that happened to be illegal, and so they've got a criminal offense. We take them in, we put them through the diversion program, we try to get them help where they need it, whether it's, you know, chemical dependency, anger management, help go into school, planning, you know, organization skills. When they go through the program, we never see them again, that vast majority of kids that we deal with. So I think there is, I mean, the bad kids are pretty bad. You know, the crime that we're seeing is pretty serious, because they're 11, 12 years old, they got guns, they're doing some things, but it's only a handful. I mean, we maybe have 10 cases a year that are like that. They take up most of our time, but, you know, but the vast majority of kids coming through are getting help, and we're not seeing them again. And that's a little bit contrary to the sort of, like, the popular perception that our The one thing I'll highlight, and I think you probably have encountered, you know, folks from our civil division, they don't get a whole lot of press, but, you know, they're doing all kinds of stuff. They see everything from soup to nuts. And I'm not going to talk about that, but I just want to, didn't want to leave them out, knowing how important a role they are advising the county or handling, in particular for the main, for the major departments, like Public Works and Human Services and stuff, they're really involved in some of those legal decisions. So with that, if you have any questions, happy to address those.
Any questions? Can I have one? We need? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Well, thanks for coming. Look forward to keeping the conversation going.
Sure. All righty. Well, we'll move back on to consent agenda. Item A, approve bills and investments, checks 71,864 to 71,913. Approve the city council work session notes from June 10, 2025. Approve city council minutes from June 10, 2025. Approve ordinance regulating virtual kiosks, virtual currency kiosks. E, approve license for the sale of fireworks by TNT fireworks in Walmart parking lot. F, approve amendment to employee handbook related to the healthcare savings plan benefits. And G, approve license for fireworks with storage and sale at Lowe's. I will move the consent agenda as presented. Second. Okay, and roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lowjegred.
Yes.
Councilmember Rock.
Yes.
And Mayor Doherty.
Yes. All righty. We have no public hearing, we have no old business, no new business. Is there any other council items or announcements?
Just a quick reminder, 19 nights coming up, August 5. We only have one more council meeting before that, so I just, and I felt there, we've got several that are already committed. Councilmember Johnson's got one, and Cobra Park is already on the list. So just going out there, getting our neighbors, maybe push that over, we'll get them signed up for August 5. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, we are adjourned.